To the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before they change it. Roll call, please.
Mayor Van Bosh.
Here.
Commissioner Bryson.
Here.
Commissioner Hendrick is happy this evening. Commissioner Callahan.
Here.
Commissioner Clausen.
Here.
Commissioner Merchant.
Here.
Commissioner McCannan.
Here.
City Manager Love.
Here.
Can you get a motion to excuse? Please send her, please.
So moved.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Posed, carried. Need approval of the agenda?
So moved.
Support.
Any questions or concerns on the agenda? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Posed, carried. We're up to public comment. Anyone is welcome to address the city commission. Please state your name. And please limit your comments to five minutes. This is your time to raise issues with the commission. The commission will not respond, but issues will be followed upon as necessary. Anyone like to speak? Hearing none. Moving on to approval of the city commission minutes, June 18, 2020.
Motion accept the minutes of June 18, 2020.
Support.
Any corrections or deletions to the minutes? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Posed, carried. Next, we need to approve the minutes for the city commission closed session, June 18, 2020.
Motion to approve the closed session minutes of June 18, 2020?
Support.
Motion support. Well, we can't discuss it anyway. So, all in favor?
Aye.
Posed, carried. Moving on to the consent agenda, A through C. Can you get a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion, we approve the consent agenda items A through C.
Support.
Motion support. Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Bryson.
Yes.
Commissioner Callahan.
Yes.
Commissioner Clausen.
Yes.
Commissioner Merchant.
Yes.
Commissioner McCannan.
Yes.
Mayor Van Bosh.
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, moving on to expenditures, including payroll, for $551,731.18.
I make a motion, we approve expenditures, including payroll, for $551,731.18.
Support.
Motion support. Any questions on this? Hearing none, roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Callahan.
Yes.
Commissioner Clausen.
Yes.
Commissioner Merchant.
Yes.
Commissioner McCannan.
Yes.
Mayor Van Bosh.
Yes.
Commissioner Bryson.
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, moving on to unfinished business. City manager's evaluation form. This is a lot of paper.
Do we just want to open up for discussion?
Yes.
Okay, um, yeah, I have a couple of comments on here, and actually, it's more concerns, I guess, than anything. In my career in education, I probably went through more training and professional development, and held more professional developments on evaluation than I care to even remember. But one of the things that I know that what we can't continue to do is continuously change the tool. The tool, this, the tool that we have right now is not our problem. Our problem is our process. I don't think that, as a, as an evaluating unit, we are, and I don't want to say trained enough, but that's pretty much what it is. Because I don't, we kind of started going there last year with, let's, let's all get on the same page about what certain parts of the, of the evaluation tool mean. What do they mean to Commissioner Merchant? What do they mean to Commissioner Bryson? But we, we kind of stopped because it was going to take us a lot of time to get through that. I think there are, there's, we have some responsibilities, one, to understand this tool. And especially if we're going to be evaluating our city manager, who is supposed to be running our city, and we're supposed to be making a lot of the decisions for this city. If the, if the tool we're using, I, I looked through these evaluations, and they're all saying the same thing. They all say the exact same thing. So what it comes down to is what, how are we going, what's our process for this? And, to be honest, I think one of the things that, that we have not done, and I'm going to kind of, I don't mean to back you into a corner, I'm really not doing this here, is any time you sit down with somebody and go through an evaluation process with them, the first step is to hear from them. And I, I would hope that all of us sat down with you last year, but see, we didn't. We all, none of, not all of us sat down with Elaine before we did the evaluation to go over what, you know, where, where are our questions on her? Do we know what she's doing in certain parts of that evaluation? Do we understand it? Okay? Basically, what we need to know, we need to know from her firsthand what it is she's doing if we're looking at, sorry, I don't have that one right in front of me. I'll just go, I'll just go right here, the fiscal manage, management, right there. What is she doing? We need to hear from her on this before we actually make our own decisions. Because this might help us realize, okay, she does do that. Because there's certain things in here where I'm going to go, that's a one. Because I've never known her to do that, I've never seen her do that, I've never heard a report from her that she has done that. It doesn't mean she's not doing it. I would like to suggest, now, last year, we did a, we had a timeline for the tool, for the, I'm sorry, for the evaluation. I would like to suggest that we stay with the tool that we're using, but we add a step in our timeline. And this is where I don't mean to back you into a corner, where this is going to mean Elaine's got to complete this evaluation and present it to us in a closed session, if that, I think we have to vote on that, if I'm not mistaken, before we evaluate her. So that, because we have said all along, and I know that from when Commissioner Hendricks and I do the, give, compile the results, people are, they're either not rating, or they're giving a low rating because they don't know where that fits into our city manager's job. So it's not the tool, it's our process.
It's how we apply that tool. And I don't think we do goal setting before the evaluation period starts. And that kind of hurts her because she isn't looking for what we want done.
There's no target.
You've got to have some goals to get through. Survive the year is probably this year's goal, because of what's happened. But how could you have, you couldn't have foreseen what's happened? So, I mean, this would have been an outlier year to start with. We wouldn't have been able to achieve our goals. But we have to set these goals before we can evaluate on how you've worked, and how, how your accomplishments are really, right now, like I said, keeping us afloat, so.
Yeah, and I think, and again, I kind of look back on some notes from last year, but I think when we actually had the closed session to go through, discuss your evaluation, we actually talked about revisiting this, like, I can't remember if it was January or February, and then, you know, and it felt bad, something happened, and of course, then everything let loose, you know? So, you know, yeah, like, like Mayor said, it, this year's not a good, this wasn't a good year to, to, you know, to try to achieve goals or to keep to a schedule of any kind, but, yeah. I, I, I think we were making a huge mistake by, by moving off of this evaluation. We've only had it a couple of years.
I agree. And I, you know, at first, it's a little, it's not near as cumbersome as others. It's a little more thorough than others. So I mean, it's kind of a middle-of-the-road evaluation. I don't know how the rest of the board feels with it.
I feel we've used it before, and we're familiar with it, so, stay with what we got instead of mixing it all up and everything at the same time.
And I really agree with Wendy's statement on how to proceed. I think that would be a, a great tool to add to this evaluation.
To have Elaine present her.
Yes.
Yeah, because we don't know what her goals.
And, and well, not just the goals, but to also, to touch on some of these points that we may not know that she does. You know, and, because most of us are only in City Hall, you know, a few hours a week, if we're in there at all. You know? I haven't been in there except for today, and I've been staying distant, so I mean, I haven't been. You know, last week and this week are the only two I've been.
So Wendy, what you're saying is, instead of us individually going to Elaine, she would just fill that out and present it to us all as a whole?
Yeah, and I'm not saying that after the fact, you know, it'd still give us a few weeks, and after that, to complete our, our evaluation. So I'm not saying that after the fact, you can't go and have more conversation, but it's giving you something other than a blank evaluation to walk in there with. You know? So, and at least at that point, we all know that question under fiscal management, okay, includes mayor and city commission in preparation of annual budget. Well, that's pretty self-explanatory. But if it's not, if one of these isn't, by Elaine presenting to us what that is to her, and how she does that, I think that answers our, we're all on the same page.
And I think as evaluators, it helps us to get an introspective view on how you think you've done, so.
Yeah, because it, what it does too is it, it allows you to be proactive in your evaluation instead of reactive to us.
Yeah, one of the things that bothers me is that, is that we here, sitting here, are doing an evaluation, and some of the board members have never been in management. You know, we have, you and I have. And when we are basing someone's, their, her evaluation, or the city manager evaluation, is determined by this, her, her pay is determined by the evaluation. So you've got a non-skilled person that's never done an evaluation evaluating a city manager, who is relying on this for their rate of pay, that's a very serious thing. So I agree that, you know, Elaine needs to, to partake in this also, and, and do her, her evaluation also. And I think we should keep the same form. And I thought about maybe, you know, doing, maybe having something out there, online training for, for evaluations, but I don't know, for, for us, but I don't know if that's, I don't know if that's feasible. But, anyway, I agree.
Well, I think everybody on this board is in management. They've done it one time or another, in their business or in their job.
I don't think so.
Well, we can disagree, but that's the same thing.
But I think adding an extra step to it won't be a, would be beneficial to all of us. And as long as you're willing to do it.
Definitely.
So, would, you'd want to see this come in next, and go over it the first week of August, then? Would that be a problem?
What I can do is I can try and have it completed for closed session that first week of August, and then I can work with Wendy and Lisa on the schedule thereafter. The timeline after that. No, that would prob, yeah.
And it's not putting us really behind any, I mean, we're still having.
It's still, if we're looking at the timeline that we did last year, um, actually, August 1st is when we introduced the tool, the, how, the new digital tool to the board, or to the, the commission, on August 1st. So August 1st is when we started the process last year, so, so we're right there.
Right.
Okay? Yep. Cool, all right. All right.
If we're using the same tool, we won't need to make a motion to change it because it's the same survey that, or evaluation we've done in the past. So we would just need to agree to.
I don't think you really need to make a motion.
Okay.
You seem to have consensus, and we'll just move forward with this as an agenda item.
For a closed session for next?
Yep.
Okay.
Elaine, do you have any input?
No, I think it's a good idea. You know, I think that that will allow you guys to be a little bit better prepared, and it'll probably be easier for you to fill out the form, so that I can, you know, kind of provide you that information and answer any questions ahead of doing the evaluation. Make sense?
All right.
Good.
Thank you.
Moving on to new business, then. DTE master agreement for municipal lighting.
This is just an update on an existing agreement that we have with DTE. These are for the eight decorative lights that we have on Broadway. The reason for this agreement is because we had to pay additional money above and beyond what just regular street light, street lights cost. The agreement is a no-cost agreement, it's just extending it out for an additional five years, and then month to month thereafter.
Okay. Any questions on this? Let's, so do you need, we need a motion to approve this master agreement.
I'll make a motion, we approve the master agreement for municipal street lighting.
Support.
Motion support. Any questions on this? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Posed, carried. Moving on to leak adjustment and base rate policy.
So we've got the policy put together, as well as a letter from our treasurer regarding the financial impacts of the leak adjustment policy changes. We've got Michelle on the phone. She's really kind of the one that handles these particular issues that we have in the city. I don't know if you want her to just kind of do a quick summary of this?
Sure.
Yeah, okay. Michelle, you want to go ahead?
I think Megan was actually going to do the summary of it. Yeah. Yep.
Okay. Megan, go ahead.
Can you guys hear me?
Yep.
Yes.
Okay, so I just wanted to bring up the financial standpoint from our leak adjustment. My, my biggest issue with it is strictly from a financial perspective, and also the current practice, as I kind of highlighted, the concerns in the letter, just really doesn't have any kind of clear oversight. There's no restrictions, there's, it's just an adjustment policy that I foresee as moving forward, costing the city more and more and more. So we, I had lengthy conversations with Chris, our clerk, Michelle, our deputy clerk, who handles the adjustments, and Mike, the DPW superintendent. We all are in agreement that it has to change. We do differ in our ideas of moving forward as to whether we want to get rid of leak adjustments altogether or not. So I just wanted to bring up strictly the financials from my perspective, and see if any of you have any questions on where those, or what those numbers are saying. No?
None here?
Does anybody have any questions? Basically, we've been working on the policy from, that was written in the 60s. And we went along with it, and Megan came in and said, whoa, how much are you spending? She's the one that addressed this, and we all said, yeah, it is something that we do need to address. So she mentioned it in the budget workshop, and this is what we came up with. There's no perfect answer, but it's gotten out of hand.
It has gotten out of hand, and 30,000 a year, I mean, it's huge. And, and I, I think that there's a way to circumvent the system so that you can get a couple of water bills paid a year. You hate to say it, but that's, it's true. And it, I think it also makes people that have buildings that are not inhabited, they have to check those buildings. You know, they just can't let them sit for months and months and months because that, this forces them to go in and check their buildings, you know? 30,000 a year, and it's climbing, I mean, I think it should completely stop.
And I just wanted to point out, too, it is true, as I mentioned in the letter, that we do have somebody right now requesting an approximately $8,000 leak adjustment. And one of my issues with that is, this is from a house that they had next to their current house that they haven't been in for, I don't know how long of a period, I would assume quite a while. And there was obviously a massive leak going on in there that they were unaware of. And it's like with the current practice, there's no incentive to make somebody fix it either, because they just can let it go for however long they want and expect an adjustment.
So, oh, go ahead, Bill. I just wonder, is this part of that, like, we've got some water, infrastructure problems with water and sewer that we should address? But does this address that, that time when it's cold in our DPW, and them allow them to turn on their water and let it run so it won't freeze?
That's entirely different.
That's a different thing?
Yes. Did you hear that question? No. Commissioner Clausen was asking if it was related to when we allow, when we ask residents to run their water during the winter so it doesn't freeze. And I said, that was a separate, separate issue. Yeah, yes, I agree with that, that's an entirely separate issue, no.
And that's hopefully something that we'll be fixing this year, in particular on.
Not all of them.
Not, not all of them, but.
We're trying.
Yeah, they'll get some of the larger ones, yes. Paul, you have a question?
Well, I had a, a comment, I guess, you know, I, there was a point where I had left my hose running for quite a while, and I got a letter in the mail saying that you're using more water than you have previously. So do these people receive these letters to say you're?
If we catch some, they do, and a lot of them don't respond to that in a timely manner. Other communities don't do that.
Right.
We even try to contact them by phone sometimes, if we see a substantial leak or have the DPW go over there below.
Yeah, I got a letter, too, because I had a toilet leaking. And I ran a test of the toilet, and I, you know, it definitely was a leak, but it didn't, we caught it in time, but it's still, it upped my water bill a couple hundred bucks.
Yeah, so I, I mean, and I didn't, I mean, I would, I would assume that that would be on my end. I'm the one that left the, the water running. But in this case, in this policy, it's, I could have brought my water bill to you?
Yeah. We're not going back.
But it has to be a certain percentage, though.
Oh, okay.
Yes, like, even though my water bill went up a couple hundred dollars, I, I could not get an adjustment on my bill because my water bill is so high.
You have to exceed your quarterly average, your 12-month history, plus 75% of it.
75%, yeah, it's huge.
So, is there?
Can I add one, oh, sorry.
Is there?
I wanted to add one thing. Something also that the city does do, which we do want to continue if the commission is okay with it, is we do allow for payment arrangements. And if somebody does incur an adjustment, I don't foresee that we need to penalize them by not paying their bill in full right away. I would be happy to work with them on those things, obviously, with the clerk and the deputy clerk. That is something we're willing to do to help them out if they do incur a leak.
Is there a charge, especially on these vacant homes? Is there a charge for turn, uh, turn on, shut off?
Yes.
And what is that?
I believe it's $50.
So.
It's $20 to turn off, and $20 to turn on.
Oh, so it's fairly cheap, too, if you have an abandoned, or if you, not abandoned, but a vacant home to have it shut off at the, at the stop box instead of?
Yeah.
And that's something we could suggest when people, you know, move out, have it shut off?
Shut it off. That's a good point.
It's cheap insurance.
So at this point, what we will be looking for is approval of the new policy.
I will make a motion, we approve the customer utility bill adjustment policy as presented.
Support.
For the people out in the, what's the appeal process for it, then?
We have something in there that we have to make an appeal to the clerk. We have a problem, if it's a wishes on the board, they could bring it here.
Okay. I was just wondering how the appeal process is going to work later. I just wanted it out for everybody, because you will have some.
I'm sure. So would that, would that be, make everybody happy that if we have an issue that we can't resolve in the office, we'll bring it here? Is that what you'd like? Okay.
Anyone else have any questions or concerns on it? What's the, what is the average, what are most communities doing?
I tried to get Alvin Axe, and they're, they took theirs off online. St. Clair has minimized theirs, they're not doing any toilets, they've reduced the number that they're doing. They haven't cut it off completely. But that's, that's the only research I did. Michelle, you looked into other communities, didn't you? Only that DeBaldport didn't afford leak adjustments. No leak adjustments. And Megan brought her knowledge from Morn and said they do absolutely no leak adjustments. So I think it's kind of looking like maybe the trend now.
Okay.
There are communities, in fairness, that, there are some that will, if they're going to have a leak adjustment policy that's kind of a standard, they will do one that allows for an adjustment for something that doesn't enter back into the sewer system. So 99% of your leaks, more than likely are coming from leaking toilets, almost always. And most of your communities, they put that clause in there to eliminate, basically, most of their leak adjustments, i.e. something that doesn't come back to the sewer system.
So if Paul leaves his hose on again?
Could happen.
Doesn't go back in the sewer.
I didn't hear what he said.
He said if Paul leaves the hose on, it does not go back into the sewer system.
I believe the what on him?
The hose, the outdoor garden hose.
Yes, right, right.
Being very specific.
And this isn't addressing the pool fill credits either, this is just for leaks.
Any other questions or concerns on it? But you do have the appeal process already in the paperwork, correct? Or do you have to add that to it?
Well, we'll clarify it in the policy.
Okay. All right.
Yeah, we can, we'll add it to what we need.
Okay.
Okay.
Anything else on this one? Anybody got anything? All in favor?
Aye.
Posed, carried. Moving on to, uh, chapter 156.03, fencing ordinance.
I asked for this one. I know the last meeting this got brought up is we have somewhat archaic rules on temporary fencing. So rather than just kind of brush it aside, I'd say, let's fix it. So one question I have, Elaine, if we decide to monkey with this ordinance, do we need to kick it back down to the planning commission?
So the fence ordinance is not a zoning one, so that would not have to go to the planning commission? That would be something under the purview of the city commission?
I mean, my, my personal opinion for temporary fencing is, I don't care what it looks like as long as there's a set timeline or a plan for when it's going to come down.
It depends, though, what, what the temporary fencing's made out of. You know, I, I think it's such a, there's not a lot in here for temporary fencing. It's so, you know, it's definitely not specific enough to give us some, an actual, what the, what we felt with on the last thing. I think it would have been above and beyond what we're looking for as a minimum.
And I'm wondering, I didn't see it in here as far as the restriction, where it can only be the snow fence or the chicken wire.
Yeah, I don't either.
I don't know if it's in some, buried in some other section of an ordinance someplace, but.
And what's the timeline?
And it's exactly, I, that's what's more important to me, is if you're going to do temporary fencing, have a plan for when you're going to have it, you know, be done with it and get rid of it.
Because I know the most common is like for festivals around the beer tent, they use the snow fencing and stuff like that, but.
Or if you're doing construction and you need to keep people out of an area. Is this something we want to fiddle with now, or?
I think we could, I think we need to do, like, if we want a, more of a decorative fencing that somebody may use, you know, that comes to us for a summertime outdoor usage, we need to be able to do something. we need to be able to do something besides what we've got offered right now. This isn't quite up to snuff, I don't think. And I know it's just been re-looked at in 96, or 16, but I think it falls short.
I could contact our planner and see if maybe we could develop a section, so we, we have a section residential fences and non-residential fences, and maybe it would be prudent to develop a temporary fence section to complement the two.
Okay. Is everybody in agreement with that?
Yeah.
Yeah, that would be a good idea.
All right.
Chicken wire is, um, mentioned in here.
But it's only mentioned...
As temporary, as, like, an example.
But it's only, but it's only as an example, and it's prohibited for permanent fencing.
Right, right.
It's not a true definition of what temporary fencing is. There isn't a true definition of temporary fencing, so...
I agree with you.
How long does it last? Uh, you know, we, we put snow fencing up for the winter. I mean, but we don't say you have to take it down after May, so...
Is that section in the zoning board of appeals where you have to get the zoning board of appeals to appeal a temporary fence? And then they designate in that, I'll have to read our ordinance, but most of them, that's how they deal with it, is it's through the ZBA as a temporary fence, and it, and they're the ones that give the permission from to put it up.
So, you have to file a, file with the ZB, a ZBA?
Well, you'd probably go to the building department, turn it in, and then he'd deny it, and you go to the ZBA.
Why don't we eliminate that extra step and make it easier for everyone?
And...
But you always have to give somebody a right of appeal.
Yeah.
Right, but that could also be if they don't like the way we've got it written.
Yeah.
You know, but we need to give them more clarity on how to write, you know, how, where they can go about. Okay. Is everybody good with this one?
Yeah.
No.
Huh?
No.
What do you want?
There was some discussion at the, at the planning commission level, and I passed out a sheet to them on, on act in 1930, the state, Michigan State Supreme Court ruled on site view, and putting site view in C here for the river and, and, where does it say that? The St. Clair River and the Bell River obstruction.
Right.
And, and they passed, the state Supreme Court ruled in 1930 that you can't block, you can't, you can't get somebody to block view if I put up a fence or so. I have the view at the river's edge, not at the side yard view.
Right.
And that's been, I've had 12 cases in Algonax, and we went with those. There was another case in St. Clair Township where Sean Burr wanted to put a fence up, and they had a fence ordinance about view of the river. You, you can do heights and stuff like that, but using the word "view," obstructing the view of the river is where...
Right. We don't plan on changing the residential fence ordinance, just adding another section for temporary fence.
Yeah.
Which would probably still state the area, same conditions of...
If it's on the river and you can't obstruct the view of the St. Clair River.
But ours isn't to make it easier, it's just to give more definition and more...
Well, I'm, I'm not saying that you can't put a fence there, I'm just saying the word "view of the river" was already ruled on by the Michigan Supreme Court.
But we weren't changing that.
I don't think there's anything in our ordinance that says that you have to maintain the, the view at any point.
Okay. I just, I didn't like the word "view" in there of the St. Clair River and the Bell River.
Well, they're coming back to us with something. This isn't necessarily, we're not approving any changes, we're just letting them come back to us with something.
Well, we just, and I gave it to the planner at the meeting, the planning commission meeting, and he wasn't aware of that, that ruling of the state Supreme Court.
Yeah, he's, he's got a copy of that document, so I'll, I'll work with him.
Well, I gave it to him.
Find something. Yep.
All right. So, we're good with that one?
Yeah.
All right, now, we're moving on to...
Okay, this one is the ordinance for the B1 Central Business District. I know this came up also the last meeting, I believe it was section E, so theaters, auditoriums, assembly halls, et cetera, similar places of assembly when conducted completely within enclosed buildings. And that was a rub for them having an outdoor performance, because this has to be enclosed.
Mm-hmm.
I would say, could we, well, as I'm assuming, would have to go to the planning commission because it's zoning.
Yes.
But could we make a recommendation to add in there, or at the discretion of city commission, be a special permit for an outdoor performance? Basically, to allow it at our discretion, not to just completely open the door to it, but also not completely say, no, you can't have it, period, without violating an ordinance.
The only thing I have with it is B1 touch is bordered by residential. It's your buffer zone.
Yeah.
And some of your performances could be not just theater, but, you know, an outdoor music thing.
And that's where it would be, my feel, that's where it would be at our discretion as to if we allow it or do we not, and it would still have to meet all the local noise ordinances, et cetera. I would just like to see this give us the opportunity to have an outdoor event, not saying that they're automatically approved for it.
So, they just have to come to us?
Yes.
Then we have our, in other places, I'm sure we have it here, special land use permit, and they have to file. And I think the problem with what we had with that one is they didn't want to go through the process of that. They wanted us to make a decision that night, and we didn't have enough information.
Well, again, it, I also think it behooves us to remove barriers. If they can just do it through a, through a, a...
Special land use.
Um, sorry, my brain's fried today.
Special event, yeah.
A special event permit, as opposed to going to a ZBA meeting or something like that to get the ordinance waived. I mean, I, I, my only goal is to try and make it easy for everyone involved, so that if it's something that an outside entity wants to do, and it's something we are in agreement that we want to have, to make it easy to say just yes, or no for that matter.
Some of those also a timing.
Well, I mean, I'm, I'm not, I'm not getting in...
I know.
I'm not, you know, what's done is done.
Right. Um, so you want to basically kick this back to, um, planning then?
I would say, you know, kick it to planning with the recommendation that we add a section onto, well, a sentence onto section E stating, um, when conducted completely within enclosed buildings or at the discretion of the city commission.
I don't have a problem with that. Does anyone else?
No, we can look at, at language. Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, when we send it back to the planning commission, we should, we should give them some direction with respect to some, some, some form of review criteria, so that the commission isn't in a position of just issuing, you know, arbitrary and capricious decisions. There, there should be some, some, some of the things you started to mention, you know, that, that, at the discretion of the commission, at the, at the review of, you know, the proximity of noise or the duration of the event, or the, you know, there should be some review criteria, so that, so that your discretion doesn't get challenged.
All right, so is that something that you could formulate for us?
Yeah, we could, yeah, I could work with Elaine, and we'll fashion a directive back to the planning commission to, for consideration of an ordinance, to, to carry out what you're, what you're looking for, and give them some direction on what should be part of that.
Everybody pretty much in agreement?
Yes.
Would, would you like to have that?
I'm not, I'm not, I'm not trying to turn it into a difficult process, but, but just, just a unilateral statement that the, you know, that you guys can say yes or no, it's going to put you in an awkward position.
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
Would, would you guys like that to come back to you prior to going to planning commission for your review?
Yeah, I think so.
I think so.
Yeah, yeah.
I have a question.
Yeah.
Just real quick. We just approved this pocket jazz performance with all of the musicians, and there are several dates, and it's at Drake Park. What is, what is the difference, just explain this to me, what is the difference between this and, and having a theater come in and...
That's actually in a park, which is actually designed...
Not surrounded by any residential?
And it's not on private property, and it's actually listed right in our ordinance against it. You know, it had, theater would have to be inside, according to the way this is written. That's why we're looking for a change.
Okay.
Because if they would have offered it to us in the park, similar to city of St. Clair, maybe, it would have been whole different, things would have been different on that.
Yeah, if you had a special land use with a criteria, they would look at it and send their recommendation to the board.
Mm-hmm. Anyone else have anything? So, you guys will handle that and get back to us? Elaine?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Anything else on that one? Good? Okay, moving on to city manager's report.
Since my last report, I have attended the planning commission meeting, as well as the materials subcommittee. Turn this down a little here. Paul Gallus, the owner of the Clinton Friendship, is going to be doing a couple fundraisers and has asked for permission to use our seawall July 30th and 31st. The August statutory revenue sharing that we received from the state is actually going to be replaced by federal cares dollars at 150% of the usual rate, so we'll be getting a little bit of an uptick in our revenue from them. We have scheduled a brownfield informational meeting, July 29th at 7:00 PM. This is something that we will just post notice, it's not a regular city commission meeting or anything, it's for anyone that's interested in learning more about brownfields. It'll just be an online informational meeting, and that's all I have.
That was July 29th?
July 29th at 7:00 PM. We'll be putting notice out next week for that.
Will you email all of us that?
Yep.
Okay.
What's the, what's the, what day is that?
A Wednesday.
It's a Wednesday.
It's a riveting reading.
Very exciting. So, it will be a Zoom meeting, so it will be recorded, and if for some reason anyone misses it, we'll be able to provide that to you.
Excellent.
If you're interested.
Anyone have any questions for the city manager?
I have one. Where do we stand with the new city hall?
Uh, so...
Especially as far as getting the not-to-exceed price.
So, we have completed pretty much all of the changes for the construction documents. The materials subcommittee met with them last week, we were at 99%. We made a couple changes and finalized some of the materials and parts of the project. So, we should have within seven to 10 days, 100% construction drawings, that they'll be putting out to bids to get that guaranteed maximum pricing for us, and that should be...
How long are they giving them, the companies to bid?
Um, I'm, I'm not sure of the timeframe. I know we said it was going to be going out within seven to 10 days. I would presume probably two to three weeks.
They're supposed to send us a bid package, so we know what they're sending.
Yeah, yeah, so we'll, we'll get that date within, within the 10 days. We'll be posting notice on our website, so that any of the local contractors will have an opportunity to take a, look at those bids as well and submit.
So, we should be getting that probably, what, sometime end of next month, give or take?
I would think so, yeah. Probably the second meeting in August. And conversations with them, it sounded like construction would probably be around three months.
Any other questions?
I think Bob had something he wanted to say.
Yeah, I just want to advise that the brownfield expert that you'll have on the line, ask any question that you want. I think you'll find that his expertise is, is very vast. He sat on the Washtenaw County Brownfield Commission for about eight years. He specializes in brownfields with a very nationally recognized environmental, environmental consulting firm, and I don't think there'll be a question that he'll shy away from, so feel free to get all of your questions asked, so that you know in the future what, you know, what, what should a municipality like the city of Marine City be looking at when they're, when they're faced with either a brownfield request, or whether or not you want to form your own local authority for brownfield activities. So, and it's a no-cost proposition. This expert is going to appear for you at no charge, and I think you should take advantage of it.
Thanks, Bob.
Elaine, do we know what time?
7:00 PM.
It is 7:00 PM. All right.
No more boards, please.
Any, no. Any more questions for the city manager?
I, what is it, that pothole, that's North William, where we had that pothole?
Mm-hmm.
Then we did that repair on that street about two years ago, and I think that's right where that pothole came up, right where the transition was, where we replaced in an old line, do you know if Mike's looking at it?
I know Mike's been out there a couple times looking at it, I'm not sure if he's had a chance to start doing any of the exploratory on it.
Every time I go by there, it looks like they threw a little more asphalt in there.
We'll probably have, just to keep that.
Yeah.
We've got to try and keep it safe in the interim.
Because we may have to go further back.
We don't need another collapse.
Well, we may have to go further back, because the pipe is breaking down.
Right, but we don't need another collapse either, like we had.
Well, talk about asphalt, they're on Main and Broadway, or, yeah.
Yeah. That was significant and took a lot of time, and there definitely will be some work that they're going to need to do there in the future.
Yeah, because that's already starting to sink again.
Well, they have to take that out and replace the concrete underneath and then asphalt back over it.
Yeah.
Because they have to, it's M dots, that's it.
Does M dot help us with that? Because it's their, I mean, it's...
We can't get a water break. I like the smile on you.
It's our, it's our infrastructure underneath.
It's our infrastructure, and that's actually not old infrastructure, that's newer infrastructure put in there.
There's also a problem over by the, where the kayak launch is supposed to be. Are they digging over there?
Oh, that was...
That's a couple residential connections that are just being repaired.
Gotcha.
Yeah.
They were working on that today. I think it's done.
Anything else for the city manager?
Does our dangerous buildings board or commission have a committee, whatever? They have anything on their radar? Yes, we're working on putting one together. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right.
Okay. Um, any other questions?
That's the one on north, was it east?
West Boulevard.
West Boulevard?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. Any other questions? Going once, going twice. All right, Cheryl, you want to get us started on commissioner privilege and liaison reports?
I just want to set the record straight for our residents that do not know me. I am a straight shooter. I do not ride on the coattails of anyone, and I most certainly do not let anyone influence my decision-making. I have only one purpose in being, in sitting here on this board, and that is to make our community a place that we can be proud of and call our home. I have only one goal, and that is simple, to make Marine City a better place to live. I am not in anyone's pockets, and anyone that says that is not telling you the truth. The recent decisions this board made regarding the outdoor theater in Marine City did not sit well with our residents, and they have voiced their disdain. All of us sitting here should never let personal opinion and utter dislike influence our decisions when it comes to what is best for Marine City, our residents, and our businesses. When this happens, it sends a clear message that some of us can't distinguish between progress and prejudice. It is what, is this what we want from our leaders? We show, we need to show our surrounding communities and those expressing interest in investing in our community that we support them regardless of our personal opinion of them, and that we value what's best for our community. that we support them regardless of our personal opinion of them and that we value what's best for our community despite past grievances. That, ladies and gentlemen, is called leadership. There is so much turmoil now. Let's focus on what is good. Stop sharing and posting negativity on social media. Say hello to your neighbors. Help a stranger. Fly your American flag proudly. Do not let what is happening divide us. We should be able to drive into our city limits, pull into our driveways and breathe a sigh of relief because we are home. And we are proud of our home and proud of our leaders that do what is best for our home. Make your voices heard. Please don't forget to vote on August 4th. I already did. Thank you.
Mr. Merchant?
I'm, I'm going to pass.
Mr. Claus?
Well, I've got, I've got the planning commission and they're looking at the Nautical Mile District expansion, uh, which is re-taking the Nautical Mile down, uh, down by the old Fisher Inslee building with a warehouse now. Mini storage down that way to get more development in business down that way.
Where is that at?
It's along the Bell River.
North Bell River.
Yeah. Yeah, so they're looking at, they're looking at, uh, the, um, Nautical Mile District, uh, expansion. But the first thing that they, they have to do is to figure out what the Nautical Mile definition is. So it, uh, it's not jumping at us right now, but we've got it here to look at. The other thing was that I talked to, like, to the planner was that the, was the view that, uh, back in 1930, when the state department ruled on, 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 on view of the, the river and stuff, we talked about that and I gave it to our planner and he was like, oh, well, there's only two ways to do it. Either buy the property or you have a lease agreement if you want to see the river across somebody else's side property line. That's what happened at the planning commission and I think, uh, most of us that are sitting here on this board are thinking of the city and not politics, so, um, we're here all to make the city grow and, and, and help everybody in this. Go out and vote and tell us what you want.
I have nothing tonight.
Nothing?
Nothing? Um, yep, everybody needs to vote on, uh, August 4th and then, um, other than that, uh, I don't have a whole lot tonight. It's July. It's hot. Everybody be careful out in this heat. It got to me yesterday and it is, uh, you got to be very careful with it, so. And we have been running on more medicals on our elderly, so please keep an eye out for your neighbors, especially in the heat. You see them out and please keep an eye on them. With that, I need a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Post, carried.